I'd like to call the December tenth special meeting to order. Please call the roll, Mr. Ackerman.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Any changes? Not really much to change here. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Before we get into the first item, which is public participation, Mr. Spicer, did you want us to open with some comments?
I did, thank you so much. So, President Chestnut, members of the Board, everyone that's here, everyone that's watching on TV, just wanted to just say this is a work session amongst the Board, Treasurer Ackerman and myself, and then potentially other administrators, answering questions, giving feedback. So it's not like a traditional board meeting. So it wouldn't necessarily be a back and forth between those in the audience and Board members, et cetera. However, we still have our public participation portions of the agenda, just like we would at a regular board meeting. So just wanted to make sure that we had clarity on that before we started. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Ackerman, do we have green sheets that were turned in?
We do.
Okay.
Let's see here. First, we have Morris.
Good evening. Just want to emphasize one thing to the Board, the administration, anybody who's watching, and that is, we've got to get our voices heard. We're going to hear them tonight talking about what they have heard, what they believe, but it's important for us as a community to get together. At the last board meeting, I challenged many people to come out and try to make sure that this board knows what the community wants. We can't continue on this path of voting down levies when we don't know why we're voting down levies. So from a board standpoint, everyone knows I'm part of Yes for Milford. We're not pushing the Board to go ahead with a levy. We want to understand what this community wants. So I'm reaching out to everyone in the community. You know where I live, you know my name, you know my number. Contact us, and let's figure out this together. Thanks.
Do we have a next?
We do.
I was just wondering about if there were any discussions-
Can you state your name?
I'm sorry, Bobby Ducheney.
Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering if there were any discussions about parking for next year and expanding the parking at the high school, considering the no buses for the high school, as well as any discussions about crossing guards for the elementary schools since the, there's no bus in in the two-mile radius. That was it.
Yes and yes. I mean, we're going to look and work with the high school team. Obviously, we've got construction that's still going on. The junior high school, the current junior high school, will still be, it'll probably be in that process of demolition. We have to abate it first. We're also allowing the fire and police departments to work inside of there and do some trainings first. Parking will be tight, but we're going to do our best to make sure that we can maximize that space for parking regardless. I mean, we're planning to do that anyway.
Do we have a third?
We do not.
Okay. That brings us to discussion. Do we have anybody who would like to start?
Yes, we, Treasurer Ackerman and myself, we have some slides, some things we'd like to share out.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, and thank you, everyone, for showing up today. What I'd like to do is give us a little recap of calendar year 2024 and how we've gotten to the point where we are right now. So if we go backwards, actually into November of '23, the first submission of the five-year forecast occurred. And with that forecast, five years down the road, we were looking at a negative thirteen and a half million-dollar fund balance. Because of that, you instructed the administration to reduce expenditures by approximately $4.5 million. By doing that, you helped eliminate some pressure off the general fund. By eliminating pressure off the general fund, when we submitted the second five-year forecast in May, what we did is showed that we had increased our five-year forecast, five years down the road, to approximately $2.5 million. That's great. The unfortunate part is, is we have a 90-day cash reserve policy that we must follow. So therefore, decisions still had to be made on what we were going to do. You then came together and decided in August that you were going to put an earned income tax on the ballot, a 1% earned income tax. Now, if that earned income tax passes, the district would see a generous portion of revenue coming our way. If it doesn't pass, serious decisions have to be made. So what you see in front of you right now are some of the serious decisions which you made in October. You saw an increase in pay-to-play fees. You saw transportation reduced to state minimum. And of course, the grade-banded sister schools. Now, the grade-banded sister schools is a, obviously, a controversial issue. But what it was going to do is put pre-K through one in Mulberry and Patterson, grades two and three in Boyd and Slypelt, and grades four and five in McCormick and Metaview. You're also going to eliminate full-day kindergarten and take it to half sessions. Now, what you're seeing right here is an actual overview of our expenditures. Seventy-two percent is personnel costs, which is salaries and benefits. Nineteen percent is purchased services, and nine percent is supplies and other uses. What's important to note about this are two things. One, we're in the people business, so don't be overwhelmed by 72%. But the 19%, half of that is transportation. All right, so this brings us to the May five-year forecast that was submitted. And this is where decisions were made, and I know it's very hard to see the numbers up there. But in red, in red, if you look five years down, right, right in there, so it's in gold. Yeah, I'm sorry, I did say red. So down from the red, in the gold, you'll see that if we had passed the earned income tax, we'd be looking at $49.8 million. And unfortunately, if it doesn't pass, $2.5 million. Now, what's awesome about the fact that you made cuts in January, what you don't see, where is that?
Right there.
Oh, right there. Apologize for that. What you don't see is, by making those reductions in expenditures in January, you actually helped the five-year forecast in the first three years of submission, which means we can push things out a little further before we actually have to worry and hit the panic button. So if you look at the next slide, that's really what it shows you. And that red is kind of the panic section. So with no cuts, by fiscal year '27, we have issues, and by making all the cuts, we can push it out to '29. Now, there's been a lot of questions asked about a performance audit. Now, a performance audit is a financial audit where the auditor state comes into your district, and they review expenditures and make recommendations as to where you should cut cost. What's good and bad about this is they obviously are here to help us, but it's time-consuming. It takes up to 10 months, and it can cost anywhere between $50,000 and $90,000. Now, this is also something that I do. And what happens is, I do it, and then I turn around, give the results to the auditor state. They look at those results, come back to the Board of Education, and tell them what they think the results and make their recommendations. So...
And if you do that, the cost is zero because you're already salaried through us?
Well, that's true.
Okay.
That is true. What is important to note, though, is because, again, because of the reductions that were made in January, because we want to be fiscally responsible, because we're going to continually look at reducing expenditures, we have put ourselves in a nice position for the next three years. We then can take our time to do what needs to be done. Does anyone have any questions on the recap?
How do they decide what things to review during the performance audit?
They will come in and ask the Board of Education what you would like to see reviewed, whether it be transportation, whether it be athletics, whether it be curriculum, whether it be administration.
Would you make recommendations as to what you would think would be the best things for an auditor to look at?
I would, yes.
Okay.
If we were to say, like, today, we want to do a performance audit, could we get them in here, like, this month to start that?
Probably not December, but by the end of January.
And then how long does it take?
Approximately 10 months.
We wouldn't know. So if they came January, we still wouldn't have their report until October.
Correct.
But you're saying you could do something similar to what they would do?
Well, regardless, I will do something similar.
So we can have similar data-
Correct.
-whether we have the formal-
Correct. I've been through this in the past, and that's exactly how it happened. They came in, they made their recommendation. It took about 10 months, yes.
No, but you would be quicker than 10 months.
Oh, I hope so.
Hopefully.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me to spend $90,000 or $80,000 or whatever to have them repeat exactly what Doug's going to do for free.
In 10 months.
And get it done faster.
In 10 months, I think.
Right.
That's a big barrier. But I do appreciate your, that I know you did this in Lachlan similar because they had issues when you were there.
They were in worse position than we are here. So they were actually given a performance audit because they were, when I entered Lachlan, they were already sitting in fiscal caution. So, you know, there wasn't anywhere to go but up. We're not in that position here.
I do-
I'm sorry, excuse me. I was just going to say, we do need to make strides forward because you always have to worry about years four and five. And you need to worry about overspending.
I think, though, from what we've heard, we'll probably, we probably need to do it with the state, even though it costs money. I think just from a public perception and just to garner more confidence that what we've heard at the, you know, the listening sessions and what we've heard elsewhere are is it needs to be a third-party or a state audit in order to curtail the, you know, distrust in the information that we provide and put out.
Okay, I was, excuse me, I'm just under the impression that the general population believes that the audit will cost us nothing. And I think that when they find out that it's going to cost us $80,000 or $90,000, it's going to be, whoa.
Typically speaking, audits throughout the year, and we have financial audits, which they audit our financial statements. We have Medicaid audits. ODE audits us. SERs and STERs, which is our retirement or pension systems, audit us. It probably costs us in the neighborhood of $125,000 a year.
Currently.
Currently.
Already.
Already.
Would this audit remove any other audits that we do that we pay for?
No.
No.
It'd be on top of what we already pay.
This is on top of it.
So are you saying the audit just reviews our records? Like, they don't make-
They review our expenditures.
They don't say, you shouldn't have done this, or you shouldn't have done-
No, they do not do that.
They're just checking, is it all legal?
It's just a different division. They come in and make recommendations on what expenditures you've made in the past two years.
Now, is that just for the general fund, or is it for all of our spending?
They would do whatever you want. They don't do state and federal grants. But it's typically the general fund, which your five-year forecast is your general fund money. Everything else is usually reimbursable. You just need to have cash on hand in order to make the expenditures.
Am I hearing one of the options is you do the work and you do the initial discovery and report and have somebody from the audit group review it and kind of, they would, they would just give it a checkmark or something?
They do their own, and then simultaneously, I do one.
Okay.
I give them our results, and I would speak to Mr. Spicer about this ahead of time, and give them the results. They, from there, to make a decision, I mean, if we're going to pay them $90,000, they're pretty much going to take credit. So, but that's okay.
Yeah.
I do think it's something we need to think about because I agree with Michael. We've heard over and over, we need to have an external audit. $90,000 is a lot of money, though, right now, especially with the financial situation we're in. So I think there's pros and cons to both, and it's definitely, I mean, we definitely need to have an audit either way, internal or external. But I think we need to really think about, is that $90 worth it? Or is it worth it to have the community see that external audit?
I'm wondering if we missed a Black Friday deal on this. Okay, what, you guys want to move to the next slide to see what else? I mean, we don't have to make a decision on that right now. Any other questions on them?
I have one more question. When you had this audit in Lachlan, did you agree with the recommendations? Or their findings? I guess your findings were the same as their findings.
Believe it or not, they took all of our recommendations.
Oh.
They threw in one or two, but the one or two was, now, this is an unfortunate situation because it's a, it's a economically disadvantaged district. So they did not have enough gate receipts to cover athletics. So they couldn't afford pay-to-play, or they wouldn't have any kids playing at all. So there was a large sum of money transferred out of the general fund each year, over $300,000. And their recommendation was to stop that, and then the Board, of course, had to make a decision. Well, if you stop that, are kids just going to leave and go somewhere else? Because it is extracurriculars, and of course, you're there for a reason. And they only had a few athletics and didn't have a lot of other arts or other, band was dwindling, so...
So they'll come back with recommendations, and then as a Board, and we would work with the administration to prioritize or take or reject or act on?
They will have a post-audit conference. It is not public, but they will have a post-audit conference with the Board of Education and the superintendent, make their recommendations, and then from there, you make your recommendations and then report them to the public.
And then the report is, eventually, the public gets a report.
Yes, yes, oh, now the report is public.
Yep.
So if we were to do an external audit and wait, and it could take up to 12 months, that would obviously limit our ability to get on the ballot anytime soon. Are you saying that with the cuts that we made in January- that that would be okay?
With the cuts that you made in January and proposed cuts that we have on the table right now, with, again, to be fiscally responsible, we have to continually think about this. So if this district stays what we want it to be, yes, I think we would be okay.
I think we definitely have to do the audit, you know, for sure, but I don't know about, I see the pros and cons on each internal and external. But I think if we, I was up for, I was up for a May retry because I was, you know, desperate to avoid some of these painful cuts. But if we can, you know, pull back on that because we've got more time than we thought, then I don't see the urgency for May.
Correct.
So we talked about grade-banded schools, transportation cuts, and changes in pay-to-play. So we talked about the extreme of all those. But am I hearing that we could perhaps do just transportation and pay-to-play and hold off on sister schools for another year?
Without speaking for Mr. Spicer, I believe you can.
That's, that could be an option.
Excuse me, thank you.
Mr. Spicer!
Choking me up. I do have some slides I'd like to cover. And I think it'll cover some of this that, you know, after Treasurer Ackerman and I have had a chance to have some conversation about this and the potential, you know, what could be next beyond, you know, the need for a levy at some point. So with that, yes, we have had some community input. We do have on the calendar eight community listening sessions. We've been able to hold two of them, and we have two more this week beyond just tonight. So we'll be doing that, but wanted to give you the community some insights, some feedback about the 1% income tax and why potentially it failed. You know, one of the most obvious things, I think, that we've heard quite a bit from everyone is just economic conditions and concerns overall. Inflation is high, the cost of everything is high, and just, you know, the economy in general is just not great. But what we did hear, I think one example from one community member is, you know, someone that lives in the city of Milford. So they have a 1% income tax. They also work in another community that had a 1.7% income tax. There is no reciprocity with that community and the city of Milford, and then therefore, they would also then have the school earned income tax. That'd be 3.7%. So there are some examples of that out there, and we did hear those. We did hear that there's some misinformation about budgets, you know, the facilities and funding and how those things happened. You know, again, a majority of our voters. One of the most important things that I think that we've learned is that there are about 36,000 registered voters in the Milford schools community. And our parents represent 22% of that electorate. Our parents alone cannot get us across the finish line. And so it is the greater school community that we really need to listen to. And I think I heard Moore say that in the beginning of this meeting, and I've heard it before from others, is that this is a community effort. This is our community, and the schools are the hub of the community. And so we need to listen, and we're going to continue to have these listening sessions along the way. Again, and I think there were some communication challenges. It's, it's, an earned income tax is complex. It takes some, some time to understand. We had some, even some folks that would not be affected by the earned income tax still thinking that it would. So I think there's some things there that we have to take a look at. But we definitely heard one thing. People love their neighborhood schools. They love them. And it's not just about convenience. It really is about the staff, the teachers, our principals. And there are some of them here tonight. Our principals are here, there's some teachers that are here as well. It's really them, you know, they build that community, and it's really them. And we've heard that, we've, we've heard that for several, several years, that our parents and students love, they love their schools. They love their teachers. And so, you know, that was, that was out there. So also, just a better, a desire to really understand what grade-banded schools and what that would mean. So with that said, having a conversation, multiple conversations with Treasurer Ackerman, I would like to propose a couple of things to you tonight for your consumption. And one would be that, I think I just heard Treasurer Ackerman say is, we need some time. I mean, he needs some time as the new treasurer to dig in, to look and have a fiscal review of everything. We've had two treasurers' interims since, since January. And so this would give him an opportunity to dig in with his staff and to see what is there, and then be able to then make, you know, potential future, you know, recommendations for cuts, et cetera. I think that, you know, some of the things that we could do going into it, some of our veteran staff members could now potentially take advantage of STRS, is the State Teachers Retirement System, reducing retirement by one year. So we'll potentially have some of that. Doesn't mean we're not going to replace them, but it could. It could be through attrition that we're able to find fiscal efficiencies and continue to be fiscally responsible.
John, can you explain that a little bit more and how we weren't expecting that? How that's something they moved through the legislature that we weren't really expecting?
Oh, so the, the STRS Board had been talking about it. It's been kind of whispers, especially if you're a veteran teacher, staff member who's been close to that 33. And in November, they made that decision. So they did decide to move it to 33. It has been at 35 years for quite some time. And so they reduced it to 34. I think that was last year, year before, maybe. And this November, they changed it to 33. So it does, you know, while there are great advantages of having a veteran teacher, teachers that have been around for 30-plus years, you know, that, you know, there has been some criticism, I think, about, oh, this teacher makes so much money. Well, they've been doing it for 30-some years, that's why. They're expensive, right? But we're in the people business, that's what we do. So there's the potential savings there if you're able to hire someone that is not 33 years versus someone that is 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, et cetera. Or if we're able to, through attrition, to not replace that position.
Right. Have we had some signal that they may take advantage of that already?
I know of one for sure.
I know of two.
So maybe three more. I think, yeah, I think people are, again, this happened early November. I think people are trying to weigh their options and what's best for them and potentially their families. And so I think, you know, the other thing is, you know, I have a slide to talk to you about all-day kindergarten, increasing that tuition if we're able to keep our neighborhood schools. It will not be a 100% coverage of that, but it does help the overall balance sheet. And then our busing savings, you know, we've talked about, you know, just going to state minimums, two-mile from the end of your driveway to the student drop-off. There is a savings of $500,000 to $1 million versus if we were to go to the state, you know, minimum transportation with our banded schools, that would be $200,000 to $500,000 saving. There's, there's still a savings, but it's not, it's almost double if we're able to do it with our current setup with neighborhood schools. And so with that, what I would ask for you to consider is looking at our current kindergarten, all-day kindergarten total appropriations for the '24, '25 school year, $1.7 million to run that. That's about $8,056 cost per student. Our current fee is $3,600. I would propose $5,000 for all-day kindergarten tuition. That's an increase of $1,400. That is an additional revenue that could be generated by doing so is $400,000 with the current number. We're using the current kindergarten numbers. Also note that there are no scholarships. So we do have scholarships out there right now that we give to some of our families. There would be no, no scholarships in this, and that's how you can get to the $400,000. Now, in the, in the area, if you go to St. Andrews, St. Elizabeth, Ann Seaton, if you're a parishioner, it's $58.50. If you're a non-parishioner, it's $7,200. Same thing with St. Columban, Miami Valley, $7,500. And these numbers are directly from their websites. And so as you can see, the average is about $7,000. So we're still below that, we're still, we would still be able to all- So, we're still below that, we're still, we would still be able to offer all-day kindergarten, and as we know, our students do best when they are in all-day kindergarten. So, there's, uh, any questions that you'd like to ask about all-day?
Do we have any community partners that might be able to help with the scholarships?
Yes, I, I think Treasure Ackerman made a comment yesterday, I, I'll let him do it. Um, I don't want to steal any thunder.
No, you're not stealing thunder at all. I, I, I think that, yes, to answer your question, I think we can find community partners, um, and I'm not picking on the foundation.
Please don't.
I won't. Um, I think with between the foundation and creating something there, and, and, you know, we also have pay-to-play. I think there's somebody out there that might be able to help us, or an organization that might be able to help that. Um, so, it's, it's, you know, I did state a few minutes ago that it's all about reducing expenditures, and I only say that because we don't make anything and we don't sell anything. We have to control our expenditures. But these are areas where we can help ourself, and these organizations are there to help us, so.
And the scholarships aren't necessarily just for financial need, right? They're, are they, is it also students who just desperately need full day to be ready for first grade?
They're, they're mostly financially awarded, yes. Yeah, they're typically, and potentially at-risk, students that are at-risk or, you know, have a lot of trauma, et cetera, and, and really need to be in all-day.
My big question on this...
I'm sorry. I'm going to speak for the foundation. We have always approached seniors who were graduating that we could give the scholarships so they could go on, or in a trade school situation, they could pursue their, their trade, uh, to another level. Uh, we've never ever given any thought at all to providing funds for the lower grades. And so, it's something that I'd be willing to bring to our next board meeting, because I think it's, it's doable.
You'd have two votes right here.
Uh, Paul, um, is at the podium, I think he's got a few words for us about kindergarten.
So, I think what's important is, um, and Treasure Ackerman can talk a little bit about this, is we would collect 5,000 on top of our state share, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, the district would bring in somewhere around 7, 7,300, $10-ish per student. So, when you see the cost of 8,000, I think you can get an idea that we're shrinking the difference between what our costs are and, um, you know, with, with the tuition and on top of the state share. So, and I think, uh, going back, I think Dr. Farrell was instrumental in bringing about, um, the all-day kindergarten model, and I think it's important, if families still don't know this, in the area, the state does not fund all-day kindergarten. Um, so, it is a, if you choose to have it, you can use some of your federal funds and others, which, you know, Treasure Ackerman can talk about what we get and what we don't get. So, we've had sort of this model where you've had choice, and it's worked for us. We have, um, roughly 211 students this year, uh, in full day, and we have 110 in half day. And you're not in half day just because you can't afford it. There are families that still choose and like having half day. Uh, the difference in full day and half day is you have, uh, some more intense time for actual education enrichment, you have more time for socialization, and you do, you are exposed to PE, physical education, art, and music. You know, if you are in our half-day program, uh, it is pretty heavy on the academic side, it's pretty quick. You know, typically, you do your, your, uh, ELA and your really great reading, our language arts, really great reading. You may have stations or purposeful play for about 15 minutes, not every day. Then you have your math investigations, and in some places, your stations have your science and your social studies, or it's woven into the, the ELA learning.
I was just going to add that some children are in half day because they didn't make the lottery for full day. I had two granddaughters and one made it and one did not.
And, um, that is typically true, but we do offer, when we have spaces, you can go to another building, you just are not provided transportation. Uh, one of the things that we would have to work out, should you reinstitute all-day kindergarten and move to a different model, is if we did not fill a classroom at 24, so Metta View is a great example, you have two full days and you have two half-day sections. I hope I'm right, Nicole. Great. So, we typically cap out, uh, at 24 students. If we are needing to run 20 in each room and we have no one left in the lottery, there might be potential for us to have eight scholarships in that building. Everything in this model is going to be dependent on how many students enroll in kindergarten. So, I just, I, you know, and I think, um, research is pretty clear. I, I, I believe, you know, as one of the academic, core academic folks in the district, that we should continue the model that we have now. Uh, but I think we also have to acknowledge the research that if you're in half day and/or full day, typically by the end of third grade, you see everything level out. But we do want to be able to continue. I think we've really worked hard to live in the world of choice, and I think, you know, should we be able to extend out and shrink our losses a little bit, but again, it's really going to depend on how many kids enroll too. And that's the X-factor with kindergarten. So, I just wanted to share those facts with you. And for scholarships, we are currently this year at $120,000. That's typically four, five per building, John, ish, ish, yeah.
Are we using any federal funds for all-day kindergarten at this point?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Um, my other question, and I think it's a big question, is a timing issue, um, because I know we had a lot of parents planning to move out of the district because we said that if this failed, we were going to take away all-day kindergarten. If we would decide like tonight that we're going to move forward with all-day kindergarten, um, what, what does that do for like enroll, like for timing? What does that do for enrollment, for kindergarten, for all-day kindergarten?
Look, Paul can't wait to get up there, but we're ready. We're, we're ready to go. We, we have been in, living in both worlds. Uh, we just have, because, you know, if the board decides to put something on in May and it passes and we're back to normal, then we're ready to go. So, um, my team, the principals, we've been living in, in two worlds, uh, and so, I'm going to let Paul go because he jumped up.
I just, our, our timeline is January. We typically have our kickoff meeting where we talk with parents about the difference between all-day and half-day, what other services we offer if you do choose half-day, how we partner with local agencies that may transport or not transport, but that's all done in January. And we did a really good job of building out that system with our elementary principals last year, that we really would need to take about an hour, revamp the presentation, um, if you did vote to increase tuition, we would be ready to go, uh, to, maybe, maybe a week or two later, just so we'd get the date out, but it wouldn't push. We're currently enrolling for preschool priority, I believe. And then, we're, we're in our timelines, like, we're not outside of any timelines. I just think if families are pursuing a private school or looking at a open enrolling in another district that does have all-day K, I think, I believe, inside of our normal timelines, we haven't gone too far to lose them yet. But I think the message has to be really clear, what we're offering and what we're not offering, because I think for our principals and our teachers and our families, that's key at this time, is what is the clear message that we're saying for next year, what we're doing.
Do you have any projection on like what the kindergarten sizes will be, or is that something you won't know until January with the kickoff?
They are down this year, that is because of the change of enrollment, where we moved the start date from, uh, August 1 to...
September 1.
September...
From September 30.
September 30th, so we moved it backwards, from September 30th, September, maybe, by the way, all the way to August 1st. So, we are a little lower, I do believe, this year. And so, um, it, we would expect to capture maybe this and a little more, because we have those kids that were stuck in between. And if they didn't go to a district that didn't move their timeline, they're out there waiting for us. So, I, I think we'd be somewhere in this time frame. I think we have 10 full-day, 10 full-day teachers.
Yeah, and we, we anticipated 30 to 50 students difference from that date change. So, when we worked with our elementary staff to, to come up with that, to move it, looking with, at our EMIS data with Lisa Hare, 30 to 50 kids is what we projected would, would fall back each, from the current, uh, at that time for the, the later date.
We've also talked about, and, and we have to research a little bit, the law is, around the idea, if you have, um, if you have two half-days that are really low, like for example, Patterson and Seitbel, can you merge them in one of the buildings so you can be efficient and condense one of those? But we really haven't worked through, that is another route, as Jeff would say, and what that does. But Jenny works really hard to find efficiencies in the pre-K area, because it is pre-to-K, because in kindergarten, it's not uncommon for us to have to maybe have a section one year, but not have it the next year, and she works really hard to balance that out. I think one of the things we saw this year with half-day was some smaller sections, and we thought, moving forward, can we merge them and, and transport, and how would that look, and would there be a savings?
I have heard from families that all-day option is a really important option, um, and I think it makes sense to update the fee. It still is, uh, in line or less than anything, anything locally. Um, and my, of my four kids, my oldest who graduated last year was here before we did all-day kindergarten, so it wasn't an option for him. Um, but I, I really do think the benefit for, for those students who want it makes sense.
And I know this is something that, like, we don't talk about, but if you have a family with two working parents, all-day kindergarten is sometimes the only option, because you're also looking at it as childcare as well. And so, I think that is also really important in addition to all the growth and everything that happens with all-day kindergarten. One thing I do think is that if we bring all-day kindergarten back, I think the board needs to make a decision on this quickly, because I would like to stick with our January timeline, because I think it's really important for parents to know what is going to be happening for their children in the next school year.
Yeah, and this is something too that can be, you know, reversed, right? We can reduce the cost just like we can raise it. So, it's one of the things that can, you know, although it's not good to raise the cost, it's something that should a levy pass, next time around, we can, we can lower it, or if we find other cost savings someplace else. So, it's definitely a good, good place to save some money. I mean, I will say that, you know, we, we'll need to put a, a concerted effort on the scholarship piece, right? Because just because of what you just said, right? I mean, two family, two, 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 uh, adult working household, you know, 35 of them would be in pretty rough shape if, uh, there's no scholarships for their kids to be able to go to kindergarten all day, so. Um, but we can ta- tackle that in committee and try to find some partners to, to work on with that.
Yeah, roughly 20% of our families are on free and reduced, so it is an equity piece that's important to us. I mean, um, so, we're, we're right there with you, and I'm, I'm sure over the years, if, if there were some partners, I think the district, but we're always willing to shake, shake new trees and overturn, you know, new avenues. But it is, we have been very generous as a district, I think, in order to meet that equity piece, uh, and, and to acknowledge that our community is 20% free and reduced.
Well, and I think it's important to point out that the all-day kindergarten is, um, a benefit to the students and the families, but it's also a benefit to the teachers. You know, I, I see a first-grade teacher back there that I, I'm sure wishes everybody was in all-day kindergarten. They're just prepared, they're more, they're ready to learn to read.
Right. And I think that's one of our struggles. I think that's about a 24% difference in our screener, our universal screener, just seeing where kids are in that fall and spring and winter. Right now, we see about a 24% difference, uh, between those who are in all-day and those who are in half-day, and then we see even a greater level of achievement for our students who, uh, were in preschool, who came to us, either through our preschool or a, a private partner.
What about, uh, like a $5,100 proposed fee and keeping some quantity of scholarships?
Say that again?
Like, if, instead of, this says $5,000, what if it was $5,100 and there was, was still some partial scholarships or some of that? Because 5,100 is still cheaper than any of the options of local, um, of, of the local kindergarten days.
I don't know how much, how much would that be, 5, 100?
211 students.
Yeah, 210.
Plus, times $100. It's something.
It would raise you about, uh, it would raise you from 295, 400 to 316, 500. So, about 21,000, quick math on the Google sphere, Excel, Google Sheet.
Yeah. It's just something, I mean, it's still, the kindergarten is still cheaper, and if you're a working family and you get half-day, then you're, you're also using Kinder, Bus, you know, one of the local daycare providers will probably fill in that, the rest of that time, and that cost will be easily $5,000 for your 5,100.
We, we have the potential to use title dollars as well, so we could keep it at the five, but use our title monies, uh, federal, those federal funds to do that as well.
Okay.
And Mr. Ackerman would know best of what 100,000 would do long-term, you know, to the five-year forecast. I, you know, what would that, 100,000, what, what it buys 10 days, what it buys five days, what it buys a month? I mean, you, every penny matters, I don't want to. I do think from an education perspective, I'm not the money guy, equity is really important when you look at the community as a totality. We don't want to keep anybody out of all-day K because they can't afford it, and sometimes circumstances are not defined by the child. So, that's truly important to that, that piece for us.
I agree 100% on that.
I do think it's important to look at how we're using our title funding, because I don't want to take it away from anything that's really important, uh, right now, that we're getting a lot of benefit from, but also, I mean, studies have showed that the sooner you get kids in there and reading, um, the more successful they're going to be and the less they're going to have interventions later, using title funding for this or not.
Yep.
So, ultimately, you know, going to all-day kindergarten really comes back to, uh, keeping our community schools. And so, I, you know, with that, I think that it's important for us to remember that, you know, we aspire to be a destination district, not only for our families and for our students, but also for our staff. Um, and that, just a reminder that our staff really is, I said it earlier, that's, it's the heart of our district, it's what we do, um, and we cannot really aspire to be that destination district if we're going to let go of 30-plus staff members, uh, in transitioning the district in that way. Um, and so, if, if Treasure Ackerman, you know, says that we can buy some additional time and some potential continued efficiencies and fiscal responsibility, you know, I think that, um, if we can keep 30 staff members, and I'm clearly going to suggest to you that it is my duty to say that we should put sister grade-banded schools off to the side, it's still an option in the future, if it gets to that. Um, and just know that, um, you know, we're, we're, we as a, as a group, the board included, are doing what we can to, to maintain the quality education that we have right now, um, and keep that excellence. Um, and, um, so, that would be my, my suggestion for this piece right now. I do have one more suggestion, and that's pay-to-play.
Can I say one thing real quick of the grade-banned schools? I think it's important to point out that it would just be a deferral while we're waiting for this information, you know, because we have bought some time, so it's another year. And just thinking about the logistics after the levy failed, I thought, how are we, you know, people are going to be looking for jobs and packing up their rooms and then hopefully would pass, and then, okay, never mind, the move is off, but, and some people have already accepted other jobs and everything, so I think it, it's smart to wait till we have more information.
I will say too, um, Morris had spoken and said, um, that he wanted the community to contact us, and we have received so many emails and texts and conversations and phone calls, and almost all of them are about the neighborhood schools. Um, it's very clear that the community is extremely passionate about the neighborhood schools, um, and all of these emails were urging us to find any way that we could to keep them, um, or at least reconsider them.
Yeah.
So, I do want to acknowledge that we do hear you, and we do read your emails, and we do hear what you're saying about the neighborhood schools.
Um, and to piggyback on that, the, the second part of the conversation, or the emails was often, let us go again, let us try again. It was very passionate families and teachers and community members who wanted to try again. So when, when this comes back up, that's what we're going to be leaning into. Um, I think, uh, only a quarter of the families are, are, have students. And so we need that quarter, every, every bit of that quarter talking to a quarter of their neighbors and the other quarter of the neighbors down the street. Because, um, I think the awareness, when Mr. Spicer showed what people missed, it was awareness, oh my gosh, I didn't know this was happening. So the, um, the message from families of please let us try to pass this again, um, we're going to need everybody to kind of link arms and, and find six friends to, to do that too.
Well, and I wanted to point out too, after the levy, after the EIT failed, and as they said, we got calls, we got emails, please put it on in May.
Mary Ann. Get a little, get a little closer. So the people at home can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Um, after the EIT failed, we, we got these messages, as they said, regularly. And a lot of them wanted us to put the issue back on the ballot in May. And I called the Board of Elections to find out, what would it cost us to do that? And I was told they don't have the, they didn't have the number for 2024, but using last year's figure, it would cost us $103,000 to put it on the ballot. And if somebody else had an issue, then we could share the cost. If they didn't, we would be paying that full cost. And it's like, that's unacceptable. I mean, how can we do that? We're telling people we don't have money, but we're going to spend $100,000 at least to put it back on the ballot and try again. So I just want to make sure that everybody out there knows that because I had no idea it was that much. I was shocked.
Okay. Um, our final item that I'd like to discuss a little bit here is pay-to-play. Um, I think the, the proposal, we can get into the details here, and I'm actually going to have Josh Kaufman come up, um, the spreadsheet master, uh, and help, help explain some of this to you. But in the end, what we're proposing is doubling our current pay-to-play, which is significantly less than the current proposal. And I think maybe back up and just say that, you know, we heard the board loud and clear that you would like to also see a different approach, a tiered approach, something, um, that would not be quite as drastic, knowing that, um, a drastic increase in pay-to-play fees, uh, will certainly limit the number of folks that could participate and also potentially decimating programs, uh, in general. And it also becomes economics, right? Whether or not you can field a team or not, the, what's the right amount? So the, the short answer is 200 at the high school becomes 400, 100 becomes 200 at the junior high. There would be no, um, no cap, and it would be for every season. And then, um, I'm going to let Josh speak specifically about some of the, the plays, the musicals and, um, clubs, et cetera. And then also a proposal of an activity fee of $25 or $50. Uh, and I'll let Josh talk a little bit about that. And then I, he passed out the same sheet that's up on the screen, just a little bit easier for the board to read. And for those of you at home and those that are here, this, this slideshow will be available on our website, so it will be available to you as well. Josh, take, take it away.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, Mr. Spicer asked us to, working with Mr. Zupkin, Mr. Trout, we were all kind of able to get in the room and, and pour together into these numbers that you'll see. Um, and wanted to look at a couple different impact points, uh, as it relates to pay-to-play. And before we kind of get into the minutia, I want to be really clear, I want to echo a few things that Paul said. Our core business is education. That is the nuts and bolts of what we do. Um, however, the arts, the athletics, the, the extracurriculars, they, they give the color to our district, right? They, they are our front-facing, they are the front porch to our district community in a lot of ways. So certainly, you know, our core business is, is the academic piece, but these are important part of what we do. And also, you know, to Mr. Spicer's point, and Paul mentioned it also, you know, when we start talking about some of these numbers, we are talking about equity pieces. And as we fight for our kids and creating these opportunities for kids, um, one thing that I believe this community is not about is programming that is only available to our wealthiest students. So it, it's finding that kind of sweet spot where, um, we recoup some of the expenses that are associated with these, but we still make them accessible. So, uh, as we looked at different scenarios, uh, you'll see kind of the breakdown of, and you've got in front of you, a little bit different than what's up here, you have also the year-to-date, this-year numbers. Those numbers are incomplete because, uh, as you look at third sport type things, you know, currently those are free in, in the current model, uh, those numbers have not been loaded in. Those teams have not made selections. The winter programs in the arts have not been loaded in yet. Those rosters were just set within the last couple of days. So those numbers are kind of up till yesterday, uh, but these numbers are last year settled in the book. So we looked at if we would just not honor any waivers, any hardship waivers, any free and reduced waivers, what the impact of that would be. Uh, so last year, that would have generated an additional $12,445. Uh, then we looked at what if we removed the tiered system, the 200, 100 free. Um, in the arts, we removed that, uh, after last year to make more customized fees. If you recall, we really kind of tried to narrow in and hone in on the cost, uh, to run some of those programs. Uh, but in eliminating that last year, um, last year, the arts were under that tiered system. Uh, if we took away the tiers and we did no waivers, that would generate an additional, uh, almost $70,000 last year. And then we looked at what if we had no tiers, no waivers, and we doubled the fees. And as you see there, that's that $400,000 number. Uh, we also had some discussions about, um, we do have a number of activities where, uh, there's no pay-to-play fee associated with it. However, the district pays an advisor to run that, uh, to compensate for their time outside the classroom, after-school, uh, student council that coordinates homecoming. There's a lot of hours involved in that. We pay an advisor to do that. Um, we don't charge the students to be involved in student council. We don't charge students to be in National Honor Society or Key Club or a lot of those organizations. So as you see here in the last two columns, we also modeled what it would look like if we assessed a $25 per year activity fee. So the first time a student hits an activity that's not a pay-to-play activity, first time a kid's in National Honor Society or Student Council, whatever that is, they would receive a $25 or $50 activity fee. That would essentially grant them participation in all activities throughout the year that are not pay-to-play. So it's not 25 or $50 per activity, it's, it's that first one that triggers it. Um, so as you see that modeling there, um, in the highest-case scenario, it would generate an additional, uh, if we want the $50 fee, $433,000 last year is what it would have generated. This year, um, i- if the numbers were settled today, it'd be close to 300,000. But again, we've not added in all of the winter activities and all the spring activities. So that would go up pretty significantly as well. So, um, but I want to thank Mr. Zupkin, Mr. Trout, um, and Mr. Spicer for all, and Mr. Ackerman. Everybody was in the room, Paul was in the room, uh, to help us kind of come up with these numbers. Um, what questions can I answer for you?
Josh, can you give us an example of the activity fee, the first time it might hit in the fall, and then what would happen, you know, in the spring if, if I hit it again? Like, just as an example, so people understand?
You, you're talking the, the single, the 25, 25, 50?
25 or the 50, whatever the board decides to do that.
Yeah, so a student, uh, joins student council and they help with homecoming. They're going to receive that $25 fee. And then come October, they get tapped for National Honor Society. Is that what you're referring? So they would then, they've already paid their fee, they just move into National Honor Society. Now, if they didn't do student council or didn't do, or in National Honor Society was their first activity, the $25 fee would be attached to that. Um, that is, I, you know, to be frank with you, that's a daunting, um, it's a daunting amount of work. We have about 742 students at the high school that are not involved in, um, an athletic activity or, um, a fine arts activity. Um, that is a lot of bookkeeping. Um, that's a lot. So I think one of the things the board has, that would come out of my office, and as I, you know, um, I had a lovely parent at a band concert last week, and she said, are you the only fine arts administrator here this evening? And I said, ma'am, I'm the only fine arts staff member. Um, so that is, that is a daunting amount of work, but if that's the board's desire, we'll make it happen. Um, but I do think there's a cost-benefit analysis, you know, that the board needs to weigh there.
Um, not to sound awful as we're all talking about equity, but I also want to balance that with fiscal responsibility. And I think the idea of adding this one-time fee for the activities is smart. Um, would it make sense to raise it just a bit more than $25? Because I had been doing a lot of research on like what other schools pay-to-play is, and they're all a lot higher than ours. And, um, like, I'm not trying to make these activities exclusive, but I do want to be very fiscally responsible if we are taking a step back and taking some things off of the table. And as you said, it's a daunting amount of work, so I don't want that $25 fee that then has to be worked into, um, a working plan for somebody to figure out to not be worth it.
Yeah, I understand what you're, you're saying. I think that's a very valid point. Um, I think that, you know, certainly, those are just two different scenarios, 25 and 50. It could be 30, it could be, you know, and you can kind of look at the, the difference or the variance in between. I will say that outside of, you know, we've added significantly to the pay-to-play programming on the arts and extracurricular side since I've been in this role. Um, when I stepped into this role, the only activities that were pay-to-play was band. Um, so we've added drama, we had a choir, esports, robotics, unified cheer, several of them. A lot of the activities that we run out of the junior high and high school that do not have pay-to-play attached to them, not all of them, but the majority of them, I would say, fall into one of two buckets. They are either academic extracurriculars, so I think of National Honor Society, I think of Spanish club or German club or those types of things that are really more academic in nature, or they're service organizations, Key Club, Student Council, National Honor Society. So I think we also want to be very careful that there's a, you know, it, it's supply and demand. We don't know, we don't really know what participation will look like until we put a number in place, right? So we've got 150 students involved in student council at the high school this year. Um, at $25, at $50, I don't suspect that number's going to be the same. Um, what that number's going to go down to, I don't know. Um, and, you know, we try to project and find that sweet spot because at the end of the day, we also need enough students in student council to run homecoming, um, in, in some of those things. And I think that, you know, those are things to consider. Um, you know, we are in looking at doubling the activity fees for across the board. Um, that's pretty significant. Um, and I'm not going to, you know, sugarcoat for some of the, our programs that, that amount will cause some of our programs to shutter. I think that that's, that's the reality. Um, and ideally, at some point, we can get those back or we can lean into some booster groups. You know, we've been working really closely with our booster groups and said, you know, kind of pump the brakes on buying stuff. Um, we really want to see funds leveraged to help our kids moving forward and create opportunities. Um, you know, I know for the band booster fee, we've talked a lot about that being $500 for next year. Um, I think we're going to make really substantial progress on getting that down, um, to try to keep it affordable and keep our kids involved. Because these, these programs are important to our community, I believe that.
Is there a way to have a student activity fee for just all students?
That's exactly what I'm sitting here thinking.
That's what I did in college.
I, I don't know that you can assess that to students that are not involved in activities. I think that they have to. Now, you could apply universally and say, you know, my son pays a, no matter, he's in seventh grade, no matter if he's on the basketball team or if he's in Builders Club or Key Club, the fee is the same and it's across the board. You know, I think that that's an option, but again, I think that that number, based on some of the things that we've looked at, I think that that number needs to be at a point where it's so high that I think things like Key Club or Student Council or National Honor Society, they, they really start kind of falling apart.
Yeah, and I have a problem with that because, I mean, Student Council, you're, you run for it and you're elected, and then it's like, but now you're charged. And Honor Society, National Honor Society, you earn that and it's an invitation. You know, so I, I'm just really conflicted about that.
And I echo that. I, I feel that same kind of internal conflict where, um, you know, recognizing the financial situation that we're in, it's very real.
Yes.
But also feeling like we want students and families to be in a position of needing to buy accolades. And that doesn't feel great.
We are, there are, we are paying for staff to cover it though. So, I mean, the activity fee is going to staff time, right? So we're not just like, activity fee, general fund. I mean, it's, it's covering staff time because none of those exist if there's not a staff. Who's willing to?
So if we charged an activity fee for every student, and that would give them the right, that would cover them for anything that they wanted to participate in.
But I think Josh is saying that's kind of hard to...
I, I think that if you...
If you had a lower amount.
If it was a lower amount, I think we could, but I, I want to caution, I don't, I don't suspect that we can charge that just universally to every child. I think they have to participate to be charged a fee.
Correct.
Yeah.
And remind me, the doubling, it would be everything.
Everything, 200 to 400. This is high school, two athletics, 200 to 400.
200, 400, every season.
Every season.
No cap, no family cap.
No cap. Yep.
In athletics, it would be, um, yes, 200 to 400, 100 to 200 for junior high. In the arts, um, they would, and I can provide this to you offline if you'd like, but because we went to specified...
Yep.
A non-tiered system. For marching band, it would go from 200 to 400. Winter garden, winter drum line, 125 to 250. Um, choir would go from $100 to $200. Um, drama, uh, this year we charged $75 for a straight play, that would go to 150. For a musical, 125, go to 250. Esports would go to, um, from 75 to 150 per season, we charge 75 per season. Battle bots would go from 150 to 300. Unified cheer would go from 100 to 200. So, um, I think that those are, you know, significant numbers. I also think that, you know, whether it's our booster groups or outside groups, I think what Mr. Ackerman mentioned is really significant that, um, there, I, I believe there are people in this community that want to help. Um, and I believe that there are people in the broader community that, um, you know, I'm just going to put this out into the air because there, there are people in the greater Cincinnati community that can leverage their dollars to make life-changing change for our students. Um, private schools do it all the time. They endow programs, right? So they create endowments that perpetually fund programs. Um, I love him, I hope that he's okay. I heard he hurt his knee last night. Joe Burrow just spent $2.8 million on a Batmobile. And that $2.8 million would fund pay-to-play for the arts in perpetuity in Milford. So if, if we can start thinking that way, and if there are people out there in the community, $3 million endows the arts in perpetuity.
I'm sure Joe Burrow's watching this right now.
You know what, Mike? Michael, I am taking that chance. I am taking that chance.
Every time. Every time. Uh, so I, I think, uh, the recommendation that I would make to you would be the, the second to the last one, which would be the note, uh, excuse me, doubles, everything's doubled, no tiers, no waivers, and a $25 activity fee going forward. That's what I would recommend to you. Um, I think it's the best we can do at this time.
What do our waivers cover? Like what, what qualifies you for a waiver?
Uh, free and reduced lunch typically, or a hardship of some sort.
Yeah. And that's this column here. So that, that bottom line last year was $12,000.
So there's, you know, Aaron Zupkin's in the, in the audience here, Josh, and then Mark Trout. I've talked to all three of them. Their booster groups are waiting to help and Joe Burrow is as well. So that, we, we, we will have opportunities for, for those, um, that, that would need it. But there, this also becomes fundraising for, for these students becomes more important. Uh, it comes to the front now. And so they're going to have to, to step up their game, if you will, um, just like other districts and students have. And, um, so that would be my recommendation at this point.
I, um, I, I think this recommendation was significantly more palatable than going fully loaded. I was really nervous when I heard basketball turns into $1,400 a season. Like, that just means we would, we would crush JV freshman teams. I don't know who, who as a freshman would, would be in, um, able to pay that much for multiple students. So I think the 400 or 4, possibly 425, I suppose, feels much more palatable. Hopefully, it will not be as impactful on families to be limiting. And frankly, 400 is still cheaper than you'd pay for a season of sports anywhere, you know, so.
So if we're looking at your proposed number here, the 694,540 plus the potential savings from busing, which is 500,000 to 1 million, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're looking at bringing in 1.2 to 2.2 million dollars of savings with our cuts.
Just to clarify though, the new revenue, Mrs. Mason, is this $433?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's the $50 activity. That's the $50 activity fee.
I'm sorry, yes, you're correct, 416.
416 plus.
In last year's numbers.
Right.
Doug, how soon would you be able to get, you know, how you had your graph that showed it needing, we needed help in, by 27? No, it was 26 to 28. Could you get an updated one for, like, if we modify these?
I'll be able to give you some updated graphs within a couple of months. I've got things that I'm already putting in place, so.
Great.
Something you'll see on Thursday, if you want to come to the finance meeting.
7:30 AM.
7:30 in the morning.
The the last thing that I would like to just put a pin in, these numbers were based on the kids that participated last year.
Right.
So, you know, that revenue is going to be determined by the number of kids that participate.
Please remember, this is revenue and we're talking about expenditures now, this just reduces expenditures a different way.
Mr. Spicer, was that your last slide? Oh, there we go.
That's it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know there were a long list of cuts that you presented in, I think, September. And what I was wondering, if those, some of those cuts, if we know are off the table, I know you and I, and I think I've heard everybody say it separately, that we wouldn't be voting to eliminate fine arts. So I would love it if we could take things we know like that off that list for just the morale of the teachers involved.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I think going forward, working with Treasurer Ackerman, what we'll do is, depending on where you go with with the recommendations, we'll we'll work together to continue to find efficiencies and then begin a new list. And then beyond that list would then also be potentially items from his own performance audit, financial performance audit, plus the performance audit by the state. And then from our perspective, we will remove that item for sure. Because I, again, I'll say it again, no, no art music in PE at the elementary, we're keeping it, it's never going away as long as I'm your superintendent and you don't vote for it. So, yeah, we can do that.
I just have a couple of questions because I've been taking notes. I just want to make sure that all the information I have is correct. And this is a question for Doug. So basically, when you looked at our five-year forecast that was just presented.
The November?
The, yes.
Okay.
The November. You said that the cuts that we made in January, plus these potential cuts of busing and increasing pay to play, would allow us to maybe not go on the ballot like in May or November because it would give us time to reconsider all of these things.
All of your options, correct.
Okay. And then this is, this is actually just a question that I have. So if we hold off on going to the ballot, what kind of factors should we be monitoring over the next few months to determine the right timing for the levy?
Well, I will be giving you once a month an updated five-year forecast based on the current fiscal year. So it basically shows our cash flow. That will be able to tell us everything we need to know. And honestly, the way the system works, submitting two forecasts a year is is very beneficial. May probably more so than November. November, you're just getting the year started, you have an idea what's happening, but by May, you have a better snapshot.
And then if we do delay cutting neighborhood schools or holding another levy this year, are there any risks to that besides just having the higher cash balance?
Is there any risk to continuing with the neighborhood schools?
Uh, no, 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 like, because we're talking about delaying the cutting of neighborhood schools and we're also talking about delaying putting a levy on the ballot, are there like any other risks that we need to be thinking about?
There's a few things that I think we need to do. Most of them are related to our infrastructure and things that we're, you know, where we're making payments. I know we're not here to discuss those things right now, but it has been brought up in the listening sessions. And we need to take pressure off the general fund that's, we're utilizing some of those funds to pay for the various buildings.
So restructuring the debt.
Restructuring the debt.
Okay.
Yes.
We didn't talk very much about transportation. Can you pull up the transportation slide, the slide that at the bottom, one of your first slides? Yeah, busing savings, wait, that one, so the bottom bullet there. So we have an option that we're still talking about, so transportation. So if we don't do the sister schools, so we keep community schools, we're looking at that first bullet, savings of state minimums of half a million to a million dollars.
Correct.
So we haven't really discussed what that looks like. Are we in, are we at, like, where are people feeling? And and can I say that half of that is high school and half is state minimums and elementary? Because we have that option, right? We could say only cut high school.
You you could do that and, but that would change that number.
Yep.
And we would have to go back to them. So it, our our bill, if you will, is based on the number of routes. And so that's what would determine whether it's closer to the million or closer to the 500. I'm going to look.
And then the the other piece I wanted to bring up, so when we were at OSBA Capital Conference, we talked to Peterman and we asked Mr. Peterman, I don't know what his name is, his name is not Mr. Peterman, but maybe his dad was Mr. Peterman.
Mike Settle.
There you go, Mike Settle, okay. We asked Mr. Peterman, what would happen? Like, so if we cut busing for next school year to potentially save half a million to a million dollars and we have a November ballot and it passes, what does it look like to bring it back? Like, can we bring it back the next day? And one of the things he said that I had not considered was, it depends on how we tell them to pause. So there is, if we have hoped that it would come back in November, we cut it in August, we could pay a retainer essentially because staffing bus drivers is not easy, right? So if we say we don't need any bus drivers, it's, he said it would probably take until maybe the next year to bring it back, just because of staffing. And then he has the buses and they have a lot of infrastructure they have to maintain. So even if the savings was half a million to a million, there is also that added factor of, do we tell Peterman to hold on? And if that's the case, he thought that it might be possible to pass in November and bring busing back in January. Did I hear, did that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, I just don't, I mean, I think if we cut it, it's just cut and then we figure it out when things come back versus having a retainer on the books.
I agree.
Yeah. What were your thoughts on the just high school?
If you just do high school, the scenario that they ran would only save us maybe $200,000. It's not enough.
Are there vans or any type of support for families that are within two miles that just like the the walk isn't safe and the kids can't get, like, do we have any option for?
It would be private.
Yeah, okay.
I have a few practical questions about the busing and I know that we've been talking with Peterman, so hopefully we have answers, but I don't know. The first one is, we've confirmed with ODEW that it's not a radius of two miles. So it's.
Where your driveway meets the road to the student drop-off point.
Okay. And then how will families know this? Like, obviously, they're not going to go measure it themselves.
Correct. I think they could probably use Google Maps, but that would not necessarily be accurate because it has to be with the Versotran software and the route that the bus actually takes.
Right.
And so we would do our best to to communicate that as soon as possible, right? And so as soon as Peterman can get those families plugged in and get them routed, we would, we would push that out.
Do we have like an estimate on what that would be once we made the decision on the timing?
I will ask them to have it done yesterday.
Because most of it's done in the software, that should should be a relatively easy process.
Okay.
Keep in mind, I wasn't here the last time Milford was at state minimums. One of the the challenges is if you and I are neighbors, I might get transportation and you might not. There is a divider that is literally from one house to the to the next door neighbor where transportation stops. It's hard to grapple with, it's hard to understand why, you know, the bus is coming down my neighborhood, you know, you're picking up my neighbor, but you can't pick up me. But that's the reality of how that two-mile, you know, no-transportation zone works. Mr. Spicer mentioned about, you know, just doing, eliminating high school transportation. One of the reasons that's less of a savings in Milford than it is in some other districts is because we're still sending buses to that campus because we have the middle school that will still be transporting students to. So there's obviously less students on those buses, which means less buses, so there is savings. But because we're still sending routes to that campus every day to transport our six, eight middle school students, it's not as big of a savings as it is in some other districts.
And I'm assuming that since we're talking about cutting all busing, this wouldn't affect school start times?
I think it could.
I think it could because most likely what we would do is currently the middle, well, it's the junior high now, obviously, but the junior high and high school have the same start times. We would most likely shift the high, actually probably shift both of them potentially so that we don't have all the traffic from the high school coming in on campus at the same time the middle school's coming in. So we would, we would look to shift those start times. We don't know exactly what that looks like. Middle school might move up a little bit, high school might move back a little bit, maybe it's just the high school moving back. We don't know, but we have definitely talked about if we eliminate high school transportation, that we would probably shift school start times.
And I'm assuming that because of that, it's also going to affect how long kids are on the bus? Like, if they're on the bus for 10 minutes right now, they could have a longer ride?
Honestly, I'm not sure how to answer that question.
Okay.
I don't want to guess, so.
I think the change in times also is a matter of three tiers of busing. So we got to get the first tier in and get them out to get the second tier and then to the third tier. And then some of our buses only run two tiers and some of them run all three.
And state minimum busing is K through eight?
K through eight.
Eight, okay, so that all.
And two mile.
And two mile. So the the junior high kids would get busing.
That is correct.
If they're more than two miles.
That is correct.
But high school is, we have zero.
Zero high school.
So there would be zero high school buses.
Correct.
And then I know that we're required to provide busing for non-public school students as well. How would this affect the non-public schools?
It runs the same way. So if they're farther than two miles away, we would provide transportation the way we do today. Whether they're deemed impractical, whether we're putting a bus on the road. Quite honestly, probably the only schools that we transport that would be potentially affected would be Seton and St. Marks because they're inside of our school district. I don't even think St. Columban probably would be affected, that's the next closest private school.
But no high school, do we bus?
We would not transport any high school.
No high school.
High school, private, private high school would then be ineligible for transportation as well, regardless of where they go.
So to summarize what I heard, we talked about the grade-banded schools hold and put it on our future cut list, but not for next year. Transportation to state minimums, increase pay-to-play, double pay-to-play and increase all-day kindergarten fees. Is that what what board members?
It's double and then also we have the activity fee, that's new.
Yes, plus $25 activity. And those, Mr. Treasurer, those changes in services and increase in collections would keep us solvent through next year, would give us more time.
Definitely.
To look, will allow you to start an audit process.
Correct.
So we don't have to go in May.
Correct.
And it gives us more time to talk about when we would need to go next.
Correct.
Even with all these changes, we need a levy, right?
Eventually.
We need a levy.
But we're not the only district that's going to have this problem, so yes.
Have we had enough discussion?
There's just one more thing that I want to throw out to the people who are here and the people who are watching from home is one of the segments of the population that we targeted this year was my generation. And up until three days before the levy, I still talked to people who went, I'm not voting for it because I can't afford it. You're retired, you don't have to pay it. They, I don't know how we reach the people we need to reach. We had four listening sessions at senior centers and.
Parker, do you have?
I'd like to hear from you guys, how do we solve the problem?
I do think part of it is parents, yeah, we're going to send Parker out, Parker Brown around town, talking to the seniors.
I mean, I figured since he was here, you know.
Yes, but but I do think a big part of parents and the 25% of people who who feel the impact, all finding, you know, 10 neighbors to to reach out to.
I think so too, it's critical.
So we've already started holding our community feedback sessions. We've hosted two so far. Our first one was at Meadowview, we had about eight participants, not including board members or district leaderships or Morris over there, who I don't think we need to ask for his opinion. And then our other one at Mulberry, which had around 35. So I would estimate we've had around 40 participants so far at our two community meetings. We have six more for the rest of the, for sort of time until January. An overwhelming majority have been pro, they've been, they voted yes, they've signed that they have voted yes and will vote yes should the district run again. We've heard a few opposition so far. A large, a large piece of that is the performance audit, they've been asking for a performance audit. And then I would say an overwhelming majority of the people who are there cited concerns of just not being completely informed, which is partially on my fault, but, I mean, we need more runtime and then evaluation of what the district is doing. So that's been the feedback so far. The biggest piece of concern is sister schools, that's what we've been hearing at these sessions. There's been a few vocal people who were there who are no votes. We heard them and they heard their feedback. Another piece is we've heard concerns of 1% earned income tax versus just a general income tax versus a property tax to be more equitable. That's some of the things that we've been hearing. As far as reaching more of no voters, I think that relies on the community, people. We have our hands tied, is what I always say, as far as what we can communicate as a district. Our pact is a good job in communicating a lot of the stuff out here, but it's all based off the people knocking on doors and talking to other individuals and being more active community as far as, we've gotten a bit of news coverage, but with a little bit more time to make that announcement, we could have more news coverage and inform the community who's not actively our parents, who I think John said is 22% of the voters out there. So it's reaching those other 80 something percent, 88%.
I just wanted to say something else and it's something that our new treasurer touched on at the beginning of the session. But when we as a board made a decision to outline these, to outline these three cuts that we talked about tonight and also that we've been talking about for, well, in some form over a year, we always rely on the information that we have at the time. Our new treasurer has been looking through the numbers and it sounds like he's saying it makes sense to pause. And to me, it's very critical that our decisions are based on accurate data and facts, so I think that makes sense. But also, in the past month and a half, we've heard from so many people in the community and we've heard what you were passionate about. And we haven't had that kind of response to anything in a really long time. And we haven't had that kind of response to anything in a really long time. And I think it's very, very important to keep up that community communication. We need to hear what is important to the community. And I think Parker's done some really great things by communicating the information out. I think our social media has really shown a lot more information on things. The school board meeting updates where we have the summaries, I think, are really great. And I think these listening sessions have been really valuable for us, especially the people who do the exit questions that help us gather information about what is, what people are really passionate about. So I think it's really critical that you communicate to us. But also, I think that as a board, maybe we can do a little bit better communicating to you as well. I think as a board, it would be nice to set some benchmarks about what we communicate to the people, especially with finances. I know that we have a financial report at the beginning of each meeting, but I think it might be helpful to talk about what we talk about to the public in that report and what we are doing to remain fiscally responsible. And I know that's a big part of what attracted us to hiring Doug in the first place as our treasurer because that was a big part of his interview. He wants to communicate to people in a way that's easy for people to understand. So I think we can look at that again. And we just really need to show how we are being accountable to the community, how we've learned from the situation and how we're committed to this good financial stewardship for our schools.
Agreed.
And, and I also feel like a lot of the feedback we heard was, "I'm so confused, we don't have it, we wanna know exactly what we're doing." And I think part of the problem is that we don't, I mean, if the answers were clear or easy, we would have made them already. So I appreciate the patience until we set this meeting up to have this discussion, because as a board, we are not allowed to discuss these things if you, if it's not up to the public. So I, while I hear the frustration and it was like, wait and listen, I appreciate the fact that we have been able to really look at financial responsibility. I think what I heard a lot tonight was minimizing disruptions to families because we know these are all big impacts. And that the conversations happen, you know, with the administration, but really when us five as a board can, can sit here, and we haven't been able to do this since two days after the election. So we appreciate the patience and it's coming, but I know it's been a whole month of, "What does this mean for my family?" And that's heartburn inducing for a lot of people, so.
So if our discussion is wrapped, I'd like to motion an amendment to, or motion to amend the agenda. Is our discussion complete to move on, on something like that? So, so I moved to amend the agenda to include taking action on rescinding the previously adopted resolution regarding three cuts for the '25-'26 school year. And then a subsequent motion will come to include taking action on a revised resolution regarding the, some of the cuts that we've outlined here tonight.
Mr. Treasurer, are we allowed to take action at a work session?
Sure.
Okay.
It's a public meeting.
Just wanna make sure that we follow the procedures, that, so moved.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the agenda by Mr. Wilson, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
I just wanna say, I think that this is a good idea because we have families that are waiting and need to know, but we also have teachers who are waiting to see where our decision is as well. And I think that that's really important to keeping our school district whole.
Right, I agree.
Okay, call the roll for amending the agenda.
Remending the agenda. Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
So then I motion to rescind our previously adopted resolution that called for moving to grade-banded elementary schools, implementing state minimum busing, and moving to 100% pay-to-play for the '25-'26 school year.
So moved.
We have a?
So we have a first and then a second, Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Discussion, did you also say you were gonna have a second motion on what we, okay. So first motion to rescind what we had, had spoken about.
Yeah, I wanna first fully rescind and then we'll, we'll motion to adopt. And then if what I suggest isn't accurate, you guys can suggest to, you know, we can talk about changing that.
Okay.
Okay.
So call the roll to rescind the previous motion.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
So then I motion to move to adopt a revised call-saving plan for '25-'26. That includes increasing pay-to-play along the fourth tier that we saw, which was doubled, doubled, no tiers, no waivers, and the $25 activity fee. And then also increasing kindergarten tuition to $5,000 from where it is today. State minimum busing, as we discussed at the end, with no high school and the two-mile radius based on the state's guidelines. And then I would like to include that we move on the performance audit. Even though it's gonna cost money to the district, I don't see how we get through the objection from some of our no voters and garner the confidence from them without doing that.
I'll second that motion.
Any comments? Since we're sort of talking about the motion, I appreciate all the work that has been done by the administration and the board members to bring us to here tonight, because I know it was a lot of questions, a lot of digging on our own part, a lot of, "What about this?", and talking to other school districts. So I think that's our, this is our function of the board. And I appreciate that the five of us have been able to come together with the administration to hear the feedback of, "This is, this is way too big of an impact on my family and how might we move forward a different way?" Any other comments?
I would just point out that this is exactly how our committee meetings are. People don't come to the committee meetings. The only guest that's been at the committee meetings in the last year was me while I was campaigning. So no one comes, but when people say, you know, "It's just a 5-0 vote", it's because we have all these discussions in our committee meetings and we can come to an agreement. We don't start out agreeing a lot of times and we ask a lot of questions. So this, I think, is beneficial in that regard.
Yeah. And I would just like to add that this, and we've talked on this, that, but these, these items are to, you know, the only thing that we've been able to think of this as is like slowing the burn, right? So like, I know we've talked about this a lot, but the deficit spending is not going away, right? This is a slowing of that. So, you know, it's our hope that, you know, through, throughout the next year here of going through a performance audit and, you know, pointing out, as Ms. Mason said, some specific goals and things like that that we can read out to help the education of the community and educating on earned income tax, if that's what we decide to move forward with, which we'll have to talk about that in some following meetings. But these items are just to slow that down, right? So we'll have to continue as a community to highlight the great things that we do and, and the savings that we have and then work to reverse these things because, you know, these are obviously not things that we wanna see going up.
Also, with, I think you brought a good point up about slowing the burn. In addition to all this, I think we should get the community involved in part of this process as well. We've been talking about it on and off, but is, I know that we have some restraints from the state with what we can do with levies. Is there any way we can do something similar to the CAT team where we have some work sessions where the public can participate instead of just listening to us?
Yes.
I think that would be a really great idea.
Yes, we can do something very similar to that.
I think we should talk about that in committee meetings and see how we can really hear what the community has to say and also so they can see and understand some of the constraints that we're up against too with some of the, like, Ohio revised code and just some of the things that we deal with, so that we can work together to build our schools in the best way that we can.
Absolutely.
Yes, I think, I was gonna suggest that we're gonna continue with our six listening sessions that are out there and then we can have further dialogue and discussion about what other engagement looks like beyond the first couple weeks of January for those sessions. So absolutely.
And I will just point out that we, I think, felt passionate about slowing down the grade-banned schools because that change is irreversible. There's no coming back from that unless, you know, millions of dollars would just be bestowed on the district.
Joe Burrow.
Which I don't think is gonna happen.
Did you say?
Annually.
Say it maybe three times, he shows up.
Pay-to-play, I mean, pay-to-play, we can reduce the rates when we get on an even keel. Busing, you can bring back, we've done it in the past. So I, I appreciate that we are able to single that out and defer it for now.
Yeah, and it's important to note that if the state ever has to come in, so if this continues to burn, as to go on with the analogy that, that I started, things like grade-banded schools, it's, you know, it doesn't always happen when the state comes in, but there's possible that it cannot be stopped by the board eventually, right? So I mean, bringing these things up and trying to utilize them to, you know, save the money and get us into a better financial situation is some of the type of actions that the state could force upon us should we get there, so.
Any other discussion?
Can you just summarize what we're voting on again, since we had all this discussion?
Yeah, so I, I singled out the pay-to-play into the fourth column, which was doubled, no tiers, no waivers, and the $25 activity fee. The increase in kindergarten tuition to $5,000. The state minimum busing, as discussed with the no-high-school busing and the two-mile radius provided by the state guidelines. And then to move on the performance audit just as soon as Doug can work through that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Ackerman, call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
The last thing I would say is just, you heard it from me for a lot today with just to the school administration, like, it's a huge asterisk for me next to like no waivers, no tiers, any of this stuff that we absolutely bring, you know, the information to the public that if they are, you know, on free and reduced lunch or they're a low-income family or they're just, you know, going through a hardship, that they know to bring that forward so we can try to find options for them before they look elsewhere.
We will make that commitment.
And I just wanna take a moment to thank all these people who showed up tonight. And there was really no interaction with the board and you, but you were patient and you listened and, and we appreciate it. And I wanna encourage anyone who has a concern or a question to please reach out to any of the board members. We, I promise you, we will respond.
Yeah, and go to those listening sessions. I went to the second one at Meadowview and it was really, really good. So they're not, they're not recorded just because of the style that they are. And, and but, you know, there might be a board member there or two, but that's the maximum that we can have, but the administration is there. And, you know, now that we've made some of these decisions, conversation can even change a little bit from what the previous ones had, but, you know, continue to show up to those, they were nice.
Can you remember, what are the two this week?
I believe it's Patterson and Boyd. Patterson and Boyd, Patterson tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, will be in the, hopefully the media center.
Media center.
Well, hopefully not, because if it's too, too many folks, we're gonna move to the cafe. But there might be basketballs next door, so that's what we're gonna try there.
Okay, Patterson Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, Thursday night?
Boyd.
Boyd, 6 o'clock.
Yes. And I think just one final thought, just like, while we just saved 30 staff members, we're still gonna look for efficiencies, being fiscally responsible, and there's a potential for not replacing through attrition, like retirements, et cetera. Just wanna make sure we got that out there.
Yeah.
Any other business? Did we have any additional people who had turned in sheets that didn't get to speak?
Can I ask one question real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
To clarify, the other cuts that we did not vote on, you know, originally and now like, like the fine arts people, with, oh, there were like a list of things. Are those off the table officially?
We no longer have a list, we need to create a new list, that'll make it easier. So that list is gone until we come up with a new list.
Okay.
Good.
That way, there's no confusion for anyone.
Yep.
No, there's no list at this time.
The list is Michael's, Michael's amendment. Okay. If that's it, we have our next regularly scheduled board meeting here in this room, Thursday, December 19th, 6 o'clock, 1099 State Route 131, Milford, Ohio. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Thank you.